I make the motion since the judge entered the college's written order and that Mr. Bush here is glad over this meeting.
My opinion here on the justice is, uh, I think he's in Frank's right of the case. We need to say "are" and say please. May the Father, we all come to God, in the name of Jesus, Father, we just thank you for another day that you've made for all of us to be a part of. And thank you for everybody that got to share today to see and do some good things for our county. We just hope, God, pray that everyone will be together as one for one goal, God, and that's for the people of Breath County. So I will just thank you for everything, thank you for your blessings, thank you for everything you've given to God in Jesus' holy precious name we have, amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you part of Kane Graham, who wanted me to put up or just put something on the record real quick, he was informed that, um, manager Roy Darrell Harold may or may not have received notice of the meeting. And he just wanted that on the record that he tried to call Mr. Harold to verify that he had received notice. He didn't get through to him and he was not in line when he called back and I guess complained phone tag. And he was unable to verify if he had received notice. They're out there with, um, uh, he received information that he hadn't. He just wanted that on the record.
The interim attorney Ray Moore, Monday morning, we came to Judge's office requesting a meeting for today. And the reason for that was because these bids, these thing of bids, been advertised to be open on this day at 11 o'clock. Uh, we, and I think the other few orders was advertised for the same day, they're right in each.
And they've all been advertised.
Okay, so this is the second reading of the ordinance. We explained that to Judge Noble. And we get some other items on the agenda, the bids and bids. He said he would let us know. Uh, the notice of the case said, please let us know by four o'clock the next day. He did not respond. So we went ahead and called a meeting. In the meantime, Judge Noble called another meeting for yesterday, which was the 10th at 2:30. That was good, except he left the bids off, and he left the other few orders off, and about three more items. But he, but he kept, uh, I think 10 items of what we requested on his agenda. So we consulted Brandon, our county attorney. He told us the best, he, you know, he said, in my advice, said, you guys go ahead. And also Judge Noble added about three items, you know, to his agenda. He said, his advice was for us to conduct, go and be a part of yesterday's meeting at 2:30, which we did. So some of these things on the regional agenda has already been addressed. Then the judge called me, meet another meeting yesterday for today at 10:00 AM. And I've got a copy of the agenda right here. And he's addressing bids. But, I mean, why would you call a meeting and not show up yourself? I mean, he might have to go, you know, I don't know his situation. But that's how come we're here today and we've had so many meetings. I don't know why he couldn't just address what he requested and what he wanted to put on the agenda, so he's the county judge. And had one meeting for today and get it all done, you know? That's his decision. But anyway, according to KRS, uh, 61.823 and 67.070. It says the county judge, at his own discretion, or at the request of the majority of the managers, may call a special meeting for the purpose of transacting a unique business over this fiscal court, perhaps jurisdiction. When the county judge executive is unable to call a special meeting, or refuses to, um, the request of the majority of the managers, they may call it in their opinion and in the decision they did. So that's why we're here.
I don't think Kane, Kane Graham's not arguing that, you know, you don't have the authority to call a meeting, it's just that...
Well, I know, but I'm going to be honest with you.
It's specific notice, everybody has to have a notice.
Correct.
And he was, um, Kane's judge's office informed me, because I was here earlier meeting, that he hadn't received a notice. Or there was a question whether Roy Darrell received notice. And I've informed Mr. Noble that he's in court in certain court, didn't know if he was going to be out or not, if I was going to have to come, and he can't. I got lucky enough to come and come back. He's coming again, but, uh, but he called, he, he went to back and tried to call, uh, Manager Harold to see if, uh, if he had received notice, if he's coming or not. And, um, I couldn't get through to him and then, you know, I think he was on the, uh, had taken another call, and then they called back, and then he called him back. And I guess he complained phone tag and he looked at him before the meeting started to inform whether he had received a notice or not. He just wanted that on the record.
How's notice set?
Well, we went to where our manager Harold was down in front, right behind the other manager Harold. But...
I just want to make a statement for the record, okay? For the last two or three weeks, we have planned, excepting bids today, for my thing. Okay, Mr. Roy Darrell Harold has been in that judge's office two or three times when I have brought in.
Right. But he received notice and that, that's, that's, you know, that's, that's specific, what I mean, you know? That, that's required for a special meeting. And that's, you know, that's, you know, it's...
It seems like it comes up a lot, I just wonder why they have this notice.
Well, it's given to the secretary every time, you know, every time we have a meeting.
I know Kane Attorney is telling everybody to call these special meetings to have a, like we do on, in, in cases where you sign off, you receive that. You know, like in criminal cases, uh, the county attorney prosecuting someone, we give a defense attorney, uh, um, uh, our discovery we're supposed to give to them. We had them sign off of it to, so we have written proof that they received that. I think he's given, he's advised by all parties that that's the best way to go, I don't know if he does. I mean, he, I, he told me just a few minutes ago, that's what he advised everybody to do. Um, I don't know if that's, if we're doing that at all, but, I mean, that's, that's the mind of the county attorney, that's their way to do it.
Turn to your question. By statute, you get has to be hand delivered, and it has to be faxed, or it has to be mailed.
There has to be faxed, they have to agree to receive the...
Right, on email, right.
But they have to, the receipt has to be agreed to be served that way.
Right.
And that's neither here nor there, you put that on record, you know? I mean, we're not intended to discuss, you know, how we're going to serve people as far as notice and so forth. That's, you know, we've, we've got, under, um, KRS, we're having a special meeting, you know, if, you know, if the court feels like that service is done appropriately, we'll have a meeting, we got to stick to the agenda. If that's not on the agenda, so we got either, you know, uh, make a determination whether this meeting should be adjourned, or take up on the items that's on the agenda. That's where we're, where we're at on, you know, the course.
This, this fiscal court, Kane Attorney's office, we know for a fact that the judge knew that these bids had to be opened and addressed today at 11 o'clock. We know that. And it's like Bridge State, Dr. Roy Darrell Harold, like I said, that's another, that's a case for another day. So I know without a fact, whatever we do today, he'll, he'll, he won't agree to it. That's been the whole problem since January. If you don't like nothing, something, he stalls, or he does whatever he has to do to, and it's been the whole, and it goes to court. It's never in the process. We're here to address the needs of the county, we need the roads fixed. We need to take these bids so, so the road can be fixed, so these contractors can do, get to work on them. That's all we're here to do.
We don't want to waste federal government money.
We're not, we're worried about the judge's personal issues or whatever. That's all Bridge, we're here, if he decides not to come, that's his choice, or Mr. Harold. With that being said, out of number C, consideration of approval of the second reading and adoption of the Breath County Recreation Corporation ordinance. Like I said, we've had the first reading, it passed by the majority of the court. The law said you have to have a second reading to, uh, adopt this ordinance. It's up to the judge to nominate the people he wants on his board, and then the fiscal court approves or disapproves. But this is the first step. We've got, the governor has, has promised one point three billion dollar grant. And the opinion of this fiscal court, we need some people that, that knows and, and know this money goes, where it needs to go to, to develop that, that healthy area up there. So I entertain a motion.
Motion, wait, wait, read it, wait, yeah. Okay.
The Breath County Recreation Corporation ordinance has a requirement set forward in the grand language for the healthy phase two project, which is primarily funded by an annual public program. In summary, it operates the establishment of Breath County Recreation Corporation, a non-coveted properties corporation which will have the authority to acquire and develop land tracts capable of supporting an array of very recreational facilities and to advise programs for managing and overseeing such facilities as possible. Instrumentally, Breath County District Court to encourage community and economic development to benefit the citizens of Breath County and Recreation. In addition to the necessary articles of incorporation that will be filed in the Kentucky Secretary of State's office, the ordinance is composed of the following sections. Article one, authorization to grant for the incorporation. Article two, purposes of agency. Article three, order of directors. Article four, agency effective date. Article five, direction, authorization, or terms and powers of the agency. Article six, fiscal, fiscal policy and items, budgets for current committee records, reported funding compensation expenses. Article seven, termination of agency disposal of property, and hard to make grants, loans, bonds, and other financing obligations, not general obligation, but in favor of the partners, not personal obligation.
I consider most, the second reading of the guilty ordinance, coverage ordinance.
Motion.
Second. All favor, I.
I.
I. I have a motion carried. Out of E, that, that was addressed to yesterday.
D.
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 One's our, give them some. Out of D, that's what we're here for. Consideration approved, opening award bids from FEMA, 4358, PWs from 47, and 86 for Testa.
We received two bids on that. That was for Testa, under eleven sites. Now, there's four PWs in this project. One PW is already underway and is about fifty, sixty percent complete. This is the first step, and getting the bottom for these next two PWs. Um, the two bids we have are Kane Creek Incorporated and Left Bank Construction Incorporated. This first bid is for Kane Creek. Okay, like I said, there's eleven sites. And it looks like on all of them, except for two, he bid nineteen hundred fifty dollars. And then there's two sites on Snake Ranch, and he bid seventeen hundred fifty dollars on each one of those. Do I need to read each individual site separately?
Yes, and I need to record them.
All right.
Did, did you have a blank vision?
I, I do, I'll write down for you, Chris.
Okay. So Kane Creek, Knack Ranch, Road Site One, nineteen hundred fifty dollars. Mill Creek Road Site One, nineteen hundred fifty dollars. Miller's Ranch, Elka Toy Site One, nineteen hundred fifty dollars. Moore Fork Road Site One, nineteen hundred fifty dollars. Top Mud Road Site One, nineteen hundred fifty dollars. Snake Ranch Road Site One, seventeen hundred fifty dollars. Snake Ranch Road Site Two, seventeen hundred fifty dollars. Stamper Fork Road Site One, nineteen hundred fifty dollars. Stray Ranch Road Site One, nineteen hundred fifty dollars. Now, both of the roads for PW eighty-six, these next two are for PW number forty-seven. Cedar Bend Road Site Number One, nineteen hundred fifty dollars. Hoover Drive Site One, nineteen hundred fifty dollars. That's all for that. His five percent bid bond is here, as well as his certificate of eligibility and approval of insurance.
Is it nineteen fifty meters or seventy fifty?
Nineteen, uh, well, there's eleven sites, and on all, but the two Snake Ranch Road sites is nineteen hundred fifty, but the two Snake Ranch is seventy hundred. And then this next one is Mudcap. Okay. I already made the vision. Knack Ranch Road Site Number One, twenty-eight hundred dollars. Mill Creek Road Site Number One, twenty-eight hundred dollars. Miller's Ranch, Elka Toy Site One, twenty-eight hundred dollars. Moore Fork Road Site One, twenty-eight hundred dollars. Top Mud Road Site Number One, twenty-eight hundred dollars. Snake Ranch Road Site Number One, twenty-eight hundred dollars. Snake Ranch Road Site Two, twenty-eight hundred dollars. Stamper Fork Road Site Number One, twenty-eight hundred dollars. Stray Ranch Road Site Number One, twenty-eight hundred dollars. And all of the roads were PW number eighty-six, these next two are PW number forty-seven. Cedar Bend Road Site Number One, twenty-eight hundred dollars. Hoover Drive Site Number One, three thousand dollars. And he's also had his bid bond, as well as proof of insurance, here. Um, on all eleven sites, Kane Creek comes in lower than Mudcap, both contractors have all the pre-equity performance.
And the only one that has to have two test reels is Paper Drive.
Let the motion go with the lowest bidder, but Kane Creek.
And in special run, they also made a motion to go ahead and execute a contract with Kane Creek and authorize or judge executive to sign that contract on your behalf.
So I think all, all the, the motion, yeah, two dollar contract, brought the question over. So it's got a motion, you pray it's got a second? All favor, I, uh, I oppose, I have a motion carried. Okay. Out of E, was addressed to yesterday. Out of M, was addressed yesterday. Out of G was addressed yesterday. So was out of H. Uh, and J, also.
On number, um, I don't know.
You look in your packet, which transfer?
Yeah, this is where you all did go ahead and establish compensation, as all were required to, for deputy judge executive. There's a study transfer in here, and what that is, it's just for the salary amount. And it's authorizing, uh, the transfer, uh, it's appropriate that salary, so that they'll get that for payroll. Six thousand into the deputy judge executive salary line item, taken out of reserve for transfer, that's all in the general fund.
So most consideration approved, that push transfer for six thousand dollars?
Yes.
Motion, second.
All favor, I, I, I have a motion carried. Okay. J's been, quick rest, out of J yesterday, out of number, okay. Consideration approved of order payment of all county officials and employees under jurisdiction, fiscal court, who have attended any training or conferences for, uh, near 2019, or reimbursed for lodging, for damn, mileage, and expenses. Since Judge Noble came in, uh, he's, uh, he did have a problem, we were voting to approve each and every office, clerk's office, jail office, coroner's office. I think we addressed cabinets, training a couple of weeks ago. He's agreed to ever, uh, fame of the matches. And, uh, with that being said, uh, I shouldn't go into this, but I've got to figure sure where Mr. Noble was commissioned for four years. And he, he received quite, quite a bit of money for training hotel rooms, travel registration fees. Also, when he was commissioner, he got a three hundred dollar a month travel space to go look for roads and whatever, we don't, we don't, outside of the management, we never had that. We've even approved, I mean, we go, we go, they can't call sponsors these, these train guns for two or three days, maybe what, four or five times a year, this year maybe? And what it is, they, we pull that, and we learn how to do, how to do what we're doing, we're a job.
You get you four years.
You should send them to the R.A., whatever. The law says, if you, if you, uh, participate in the Senate program, then, then it must be budgeted. This is, my fifth year has been in this position, uh, we've never had this problem before. I mean, that's a question, and we've, we've got money in this fiscal budget to cover these expenses. Why Mr. Noble don't want to pay ours, I don't know. That's another story, but, uh, I mean, I consider that motion.
I want to add, you know, he declined to pay your guys, and then he also declined mine, uh, which, while, and so, I, I read the minutes and researched every treasurer before me that I could come back, call away the family, or, which is three back. Went to every association conference, I were six years in the county, paid for them. The last conference we went to, that he questioned, there was, I got numbers from D O T, who hosted the conference, there were sixty-seven county treasurers out. In my opinion, it's all political, why, why he deny, that's fine, I mean, it won't stop me, and I sure won't talk, I will go. Uh, the notion that, you know, you wouldn't want your employees to be educated is, is mind blowing, but, uh, that's neither here nor there. But I just want to put out there, it's not anything that I'm doing or abusing that nobody else has done, so.
Well, as mayor of this court, we have never, not once, not once denied any office of training, seeing the money or travel space, not once. But, like I said, for some reason, Mr. Noble denies ours. I consider that motion.
Motion, second.
All favor. I, I have a motion carried. Okay. Out of H, discussion and possible action circumstances of the road science project, Miss Irene Moore.
I'd like to come in on that one. We, we asked, voted on this, past the class.
It's been a birthday back to office, I think.
Yeah, and if he ain't, I know he's got the work, paperwork laying there to be signed. I, I personally think if he ain't going to sign that, just let him abolish it, or whatever he wants to do with it, we just get together and paper to sign and put them up ourselves. And I, and we're the wreck, they know. And I've had several people calling me manager bull while they ain't been but us.
I don't, and I've asked the judge personally, and I, I couldn't get no answer.
Why, he won't give you no answer?
All he has to do is go, say highway department, we talked to Corbin Kyle over, and he's, he's one of, he works over the highway, uh, we talked to him this week. And he said he has to sign the, what they call an MOA, it's memorandum of agreement, that's all it is, you're, so. I saw him, he was signing the name, and they'll, they'll put up the signs, uh, they put it aside where you, you know, you request where you want to put them, on, on, on highway, whatever. But it's put up pretty much at the highway department, you know, the state, where they put them up, uh, we discussed it with the judges. And... And don't even over there, yes, there's an issue is how many signs you could put at, at the county land, I mean, there could be a lot of these signs at each end. I think they're trying to work all that out, and I have to go with you or whatever, so.
We put that sign on eleven ten, isn't it?
That's what I'm saying, of course, they're trying to get that worked out. The book told us, if it, you know, we just get together, if the judge signed the MOA, you know, putting up the signs was no problem, you just leave the state, which, where we, like, okay, you can put it up. So we need to, our, Miss Irene Moore, I mean, just, you know, I mean, I don't know why he didn't sign it, but...
I make a motion, one day, Monday or Tuesday, whenever we get up with him, if he's got it, don't want to sign it, just discadame it, we just go ahead and paper ourselves, and work with the state highway movement, or they give us the token.
We, we come back, got the crystal, call the field, you'll learn, have right paperwork, resolution, exactly what it needs to say, and all that. So I mean, that should be worked out.
Is there a new resolution?
It could be the same resolution, the judge needs to sign it.
Same resolution.
He just needs to carry it through.
It's just, it, it's just like when we get popped, or, or we get assaulted from the state, you have to sign the MOA. The judge has to sign it, and I send it to Stephanie, and then Stephanie gets the ball rolling. And when Crystal talked to her yesterday, she said all she needed was that sign. So when the judge gets back Monday morning, I'm going to go in there and ask him when he signed that, so I can send it to her.
Is that the exception over here for him to sign? Do you know?
I'm not sure, Russ.
But we have passed another resolution, so there's nothing, that's no problem.
No, we can use that resolution, the resolution certified, that MOA just got fixed, Monday morning gets back, I'll, I'll trace it.
Right now. Now, does clarify all these issues you all were talking about as far as placement signs, whatever logistics that is, no bearing on him signing it or her signing it, or that kind of stuff, okay?
Of course, it... Maybe it's quarter one has to be on the sand as far as the resolution, we might have to change it.
Right, but that's something, but they'll, they'll...
Christian should be able to work at that. Well, you just leave, you just sign the MOA.
Has he given any answers to why he has no?
I've asked him personally.
Any of you?
That's the reason we went to Corbin, get you to figure out what's going on.
Okay, he has not said no.
You'd asked him in a public meeting, he indicated that he was...
He said he was out for it. He said in the last, that one meeting, yes.
But he's yet to sign the MOA, I mean, I don't know why.
And, and that was one item taken off the agenda that you referenced, wasn't it, huh?
Uh, regional agenda that we submitted to him on Monday, that item was on there. The meeting he took, uh, he called for yesterday, 2:30, and he took the item over out of the agenda. Let's give it to, let's give it to the next, the attorney, make it twenty seconds. Get ready, we...
I just asked him Monday if he ain't going to sign it, this is...
Well, let's, we start. Well, we just do that, just get like, bring the city with him Monday, get him signing the MOA.
If he doesn't sign it, just take it.
If he don't, they will represent.
I'll take one, two bid. That's what I'll do. It's instead of asking if he has. I'm just taking, getting others, I mean.
If he fails to sign it, or if you refuse, which is the risk at the regular twenty second, I'll let it.
And also probably, if you don't private payment, I mean, that's what we're talking about, I don't know that it would actually require any action of the fiscal court. I mean, if, if the state department is good with it, and you all are willing, people are willing... I mean, if, if the state department is good with it, and you all are willing, you think we're willing, you know, I think that would be the thing.
Court told us, it's never issued before, ladies, you know, ladies, just sign off on it, put the signs up, done deal. They said he's, you know, he didn't know why he hadn't signed it, and we didn't, we don't either, but, but we'll just wait and see what happens Monday, and then we'll go from there. Okay, item E, I think we addressed that yesterday. Item N, we also addressed that yesterday. Item O was addressed. Okay. Out of P, consideration approval to allocate ABC funds between administrative and law enforcement function. There was some discussion in the meeting yesterday about ABC funds. I think, uh, Judge O'Callaghan got, uh, kind of like a mechanic crawling in mind, use that fund for. He may be able to do that, authoritative to do that, but I don't, in my opinion, I don't see how, why you need a, uh, mechanic to crawl. You've got a sheriff's office, uh, you can easily take the ABC money and maybe John McCarry extra W or whatever he needs to do.
And I want to say this, which is in your packet, I gave rise to this, the fiscal court care of Jeff Noble and the past his judge, received a letter dated September twenty-seventh from John F. Estle, attorney of the law firm Foxwood, Woodman Estle, out of Haynesville, Kentucky. He, from my understanding, is a partner of this firm, and also represents the Kentucky Sheriff's Association. This letter, on behalf of that association, was in response to Jeff's decision to withdraw, uh, the appointment of sheriff as, uh, county ABC administrator. At the time, it was an ideal situation, because you had the county chief law enforcement officer, serving as ABC administrator. And so, you know, you had all those, the capability from all those functions there in one, now it's changed. And as a result of that, and as a result of ABC laws being a basic interest of the sheriff's association, uh, the attorney wrote the letter, made the recommendation to the fiscal court, I'll read what he says. Further, I suggest that you and the fiscal court determine what annual percentage of the ABC, the ABC funds received under KRES two-four-three-oh-seven-five will be allocated to the sheriff for law enforcement purposes. There's three, under letter of the law, there's three functions relating to ABC regulation, that that money can be spent on. It's administration, it's regulation, and it's policing. And being as the sheriff's office, the sheriff is the chief law enforcement officer of the county, and being as now the people, individuals that Jeff appointed yesterday are not certified, uh, as he admitted. The law enforcement function does fall back to the sheriff's office, so.
Well, even if, the way I'm saying, you, you tend to get certified, it'll cost a lot, a lot of money for John to get him to have it and all that.
Yes. Yes, circumstance you have to go through before you can get into the category.
Right. And, uh, we have, the money, I guess the way you do this, as far as determining percentage of allocation, you have just a little over thirty-two thousand dollars in the bank now. So, you need to determine a percentage, what per, what percentage of that existing money will be allocated to the sheriff's office, and what percentage of future revenue. So, it'd probably be best, you know, whatever, though percentage would be the same number, to make it easy, but you know what I'm saying? It'll be fifty-fifty, or seventy-five, twenty-five, eighty, twenty, whatever.
The judge is administrator right now, right?
He.
That you took it from, yeah.
The way he work, he, he is.
Which he can do, he can do the.
Right. But, you know, I'm, we do have, we have three businesses, you know, that pay, rock, grid, two business licenses, one liquor. So, as far as the administrative functions of it, you know, it's, well, you, you know, I mean, John has administrated focused on the law enforcement, and you.
Let, let me close your out, I'll read it, you go to the office, I'll.
So, the majority of the work, is what I'm trying to say, is policing.
You're not, you're not gonna bring in probably twenty, lucky you can bring in ten to fifteen thousand, but you're, you're not gonna employ three figures.
So, he's gonna have to get him certified through the county.
If you have the forty-five, thirty thousand dollars.
Law enforcement, thirty, twenty-five, or industry.
Right. And it would be good, and then, then the seventy-five percent of the existing money, what we got now and the future. Right.
And you can't accomplish when you.
Right, it does have to be.
Does need.
Right, so, I mean, it's just kind of worth the same thing. Really, to me, the best idea thing would be that, uh, as far as the law enforcement, you would think that the sheriff had, you know, would just have great access, but the laws are set up towards, go to the fiscal court. So, it was kind of work, not like there was anything else, anything he wants to buy, he knows, no, like you guys, we'll get that approved, we'll cut a check, get that covered.
What else you making motion, just seventy-five percent law enforcement, twenty-five, administrator?
It's a good average, I mean, I just don't get that top tier, but I figured that's, I mean, that sounds better, I have to be more law enforcement, you wouldn't, and you're great, I mean, that's my opinion. I agree with that motion.
Seventy-five, uh.
Of the existing and future.
You gotta have seventy-five, and three is a law enforcement. Testing account, and all future revenue.
All favor, I, I, I have a motion carried. Motion for adjournment.
No, well, they're not, I'm human, one thing on that, again, with the day of the judge, uh, we need, I need permission, need approval. I had to create a new line item for salary, because, you know, that was non-existent budgeted expense. That line item is zero-one-five-zero-zero-one-one-zero-three. I just need approval to add that to our standing order. That way, she can be paid every payroll, on everyone else, you know, without, and get approval every time.
How would you, she, she gonna get paid salary by.
Um, yes, the salary employees, I mean, her, the amount you said, it's just divided by twenty-six pay periods, and yes, she's right. I make a motion. I mean, and honestly, it wouldn't matter if payroll frequency or not, it's, it just, you know, all payroll lines are on the standing orders like utilities are. That way, we can wrap the jet on pay for payday without having to wait, you know?
True.
Yep.
If she accepts it, she.
Well, I, I did talk, I talked to the county attorney about that, and I asked him, I said, you know, Jeff indicated yesterday that, you know, that, that, that he was not wanting to say that, that it would be contested. And I said, what do we need to do? And he told me, the fiscal court had acted, uh, you did establish the salary. So, until and unless, course it otherwise, we proceed forward and pay for that. Would you approve the transfer? I just need the permission to add that line item to our standing order. And once you approve that, I send that to DLG for final approval, by the state office of the filing officer.
So, he appointed her fixable, July thirty-first or August?
August first.
So, her.
There will be a check for her back pay from August one till now, and then we'll start. So, it's all, uh, the next payroll we have, there'll be two checks for her. The first check, correct me if I'm wrong, will be, and I did ask Brandon about the back pay, and he said yes. Uh, it'll be for a back pay from August one till the day that we do the payroll. And then, she'll also get a regular payroll check for that pay period.
He go there, he, uh, still pending the court.
His court has ultimate authority over all fiscal matters, the salary has been established. And here's the plan, whereas of what the salary ends up being, there's gonna be back pay of. And that was his advice, and I, and I do agree. I see no reason not to start.
So, now, the, the, the figure that we voted on yesterday for her salary, we just go ahead and start paying her?
That's right.
Is that the six thousand dollars?
That's right.
And it does say that part-time or?
Motion, yes, it was part-time, salary exempt. So, this motion will be to add, um, appropriation line zero-one-five-zero-zero-one-one-zero-three, deputy judge executive salary to the fiscal court's annual standing order.
You have a motion.
Motion.
Say it.
All favor, I, I, I have a motion carried. That may be, like, motion for adjournment.
I hate it. Well, I know. And your motion. I make a motion.
All favor.